Tony, you ready? We're ready in the back. Okay, I'm gonna open the Board of County Commission meeting Tuesday, January 26, 2016. Reverend Sheila McCoy is not with us, so in her absence, I've asked the Commissioner Reverend Flag if he would do the prayer this morning. And we have, since you're doing the prayer, let's ask Commissioner Harris to lead us into Pledge Allegiance.
Let us bow our heads and reverence our hearts to God. Almighty and everlasting God, we humbly approach the throne of grace and mercy this morning. We thank and praise you for the beauty of a day that we've never experienced before. We thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to serve our community and for our community to join in with us to enhance the quality of living for all of our citizens. Bless us today in our agenda. Heavenly Father, give us the wisdom, the knowledge, and the understanding to make proper decisions and to work together as a team so that you can get the honor and the glory. Make us all better and stronger and wiser. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Please join in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Flag and Commissioner Harris. Okay, Commissioners, item two on the agenda is the minutes of the January 12th County Commission meeting. If you've had a chance to review them, I'll entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign it carries. Thank you. Next, we have an employee recognition. I'll turn to Mr. Leary, I presume, this morning?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the employee is in a training seminar today and will not be with us, so we'll just defer this recognition until the next meeting, if that's all right with you.
Yep, that's fine. Okay, we'll go into public comment next. First on the agenda, we have Mr. Seaver Newsome III. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. How y'all doing?
Doing good. Thank you.
My name is Seaver Newsome. I live in Yulee, Florida, so I have a little drive to get here this morning. The reason I came is I want to present to each and every one of you an ordinance that Lee County, Florida, has in effect. This ordinance protects all statues and monuments from being removed, relocated, or destroyed. You have a beautiful monument in front of the courthouse, the Confederate Soldier, and you have monuments for World War I, II, Korea, Vietnam, and Desert Storm. But the Confederate monument in particular, because of everything that's happening in the South now, trying to remove Southern history and heritage, I think it'd be very wise to try to protect this monument today before tomorrow, because this happening all over the South with anything to do with the Confederacy, with monuments and statues, perfect example is New Orleans. Those four beautiful monuments there are being taken down, or going to be taken down. So with that being said, may I approach?
Yes, please.
This is a copy of the ordinance from Lee County, near four miles, and it has been passed.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. And hopefully, you can read it and adopt it somehow so that it'll retain to your county. I'm doing this all over places. Lake City, I went and gave their city council this last week. In Jacksonville, Florida, where I was born and raised, I'm having Heming Park designated a city landmark, because there's a Confederate statue there that's been there since 1898, and it has never been designated a city landmark. So they're in the process of going in front of the city council to do that. That way, it'll be protected. You have to protect statues and monuments today, or they can be taken down tomorrow. And like I said, with everything that's happening in the South now, I hate to see history, because I love history. I hate to see anything to do with history being destroyed. It's like what they're doing in Iraq, ISIS destroying, they just destroyed a 1,200-year-old church. It's just, I just think it's wrong. And I hope you will read this, and I'm doing this for your county and for Southern history and heritage and statues and monuments. Please consider this ordinance I gave you.
Mr. Newsome, thank you for your long drive this morning and sharing this information.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
We will digest it and consider it, sir.
Thank you much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Fay Sparkman.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Three fifteen. I know that you keep saying there's no money, but with the weather, the way it's been, and when it gets cold like this, if you go up and down three fifteen, some of the cracks are now this wide. Three fifteen cannot be on a proposed list and wait for another year or two. It's not gonna work. So I did some research. I had my husband pull up other thing on the one cent sales tax that we pay, what you call it Better Place Plan money. There's four things in there that you have to do with that money. One is bridges, one is roads, one is health for people that don't have the money, and the other is buses for the whole county. The only thing out of those four that I see happening is the buses that do travel throughout the county to take people in town or take them home. So somebody in Marion County Line told me that there's a sign up that three fifteens an evacuation route. So to me, yes, I know there's a lot of roads in this county, I travel a lot of them, that need to be done, but please, don't keep putting off three fifteen. It's getting worse. I had already given you all the statistics of how many people travel that. I don't know what else to do. Yes, I know you keep telling me there's no money, but to me, if I remember right, when the state turned it over to the county, there was some kind of paperwork. If you ever needed help, there'd be money there, and I think it's from DOT or something like that. I'm not sure. Somebody used to do the research on it. The other thing I have to say is, we have our monthly meeting at Fire Station Four, the Volunteer Station Interlaken, and each month, we've been having speakers. Last month, we had Mr. Overture, Supervisor of Elections, and he did an excellent presentation on the early voting. We also had Mr. Harvey. This month, coming up February 1st, which is Monday, we're having Buddy Goddard, candidate for District Five, Felicia Nelson, Superintendent, candidate for Superintendent of Schools, and Tom Williams, candidate for Sheriff. Public's invited, starts at seven o'clock. Anybody that would like to come and speak, just let one of us know, so we can put you on the agenda to speak, because we'd love to have you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Ruth Anthrope.
Good morning.
How are the grapes doing, Ms. Anthrope?
Right now, they're dormant.
Keep them warm?
They're dormant. We're getting ready to see them in March.
Ms. Ruth Anth has a fine winery in the south end of the county.
Good to see y'all. Good morning. My address is 112 Tiger Lane, Satsuma. I'm here to, speaking from three different areas. One, I taught American history to some of your children for years.
You did.
And I just, and I'm also a veteran, Navy veteran, so my patriotism runs very deep. And I'm also here representing the daughters of the American Revolution. And one of our, one of our purposes is historic preservation. So I'm here concerning the monuments we're talking about and what's happening all over. And I'm so distressed. When you look at the courthouse lawn, it's not only the Confederate monument, which is the most pronounced, but one of them is Desert Storm, and our son's name is on that one. So I really feel this is something that we need, this is our history. This is our hearts. This is our country. So I'm here to support the ordinance that's been presented to you and for your consideration to preserve. We can't just erase history. Good, bad, or indifferent, that's our history, and this is our country. So I'm here to ask you to take a long, hard look at that monument, that ordinance, and see if we can do some protection for Putnam County. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Debus, I have you next, but do you want to wait till we have the conversation on fracking, or you want to go ahead and speak this morning?
No.
Okay, sir. Thank you. Okay, we have Rick Haven.
Good morning.
Morning.
We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, and they are endowed by their Creator, where certain inalienable rights among these are life, liberty, the pursuit of happiness. That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, driving their powers from the consent of the governed. That whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or abolish it. And institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles, and organizing its powers in such form as to them shall seem likely to affect their safety and happiness. Prudence indeed will dictate that governments long established should not be changed for light and transient causes. And accordingly, all experience has shown, the mankind are more disposed to suffer while evils are sufferable than to right themselves by abolishing the forms for which they are accustomed. But when a long train of abuses and assertions pursuant inevitably the same objective offenses are designed to reduce them under absolute despotism, it is their right, it is their duty, to through all such government provide a new guard for their future security. Such has been the patient suffrage of these taxpayers of Putnam County. It is now the necessity which contains them to alter the system of government of Putnam County. You will notice these words are from the Declaration of Independence. Paraphrased slightly to fit my address this morning, words that you swore in an oath to, when elected, to uphold and defend. Two weeks ago, I asked this board, and I'm asking again, to consider placing on the November 2016 ballot, an initiative that would change our form of government from that of a non-charter government within the state of Florida to that of a chartered government. The citizens of Florida becoming more aware of the county government's and its officers, and in these demands, our own Senator Travis Hudson has entered Senate Resolution, Senate Joint Resolution, rather, 648, that will amend Articles Eight, Section One of the Florida Constitution, that will alter the manner of election of some county officials and their duties, and will perhaps make it easier to transition to charter governments in Florida. Since I last addressed this board, I have had an overwhelming support from those that I have talked to, or called, or that have emailed to Putnam American Patriot News, that this change is long past due. Many have stated in their communications they will not support any commissioner for reelection or election, they will not support this change in our county government. The Florida statute gives we, the people, a mechanism to place this initiative on the upcoming ballot without your support. However, the support of only three of you is always needed. To that end, I'm asking each of you on this board to comment as to support for a county government for Putnam County. Your silence will be duly noted as well as we have a voice and a newspaper. Thank you.
If you're asking that question, Mr. Haven, I don't know enough about charter government to answer that, sir. With respect. Any of my other colleagues want to answer? You feel free to.
I've read on charter government, and I don't, again, have a relationship with the larger, more urban counties that seem to be functioning well with that. I also think that there is a process and a procedure that is already laid out, that's spelled out, as it relates to how you get from a non-chartered county to a chartered county. And I don't think that it is as simple as turning a light on in a room for this commission to decide that it can be on the ballot in November. I think there are some prerequisites that must be met according to what I have read, and I would certainly hope that this commission would lean on the knowledge and the wisdom of our legal department to navigate us through those steps so that we, in fact, can do whatever is necessary to give any citizens that think that that's what we need an opportunity to have due process.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I've done a little bit of research on it, and the timeline that you're asking about is simply impossible to pull off by November due to many reasons. One, I think you have to have, it's a, it's a large number of the registered voters of the county. I want to say around 15,000. It's quite a bit.
No, you're wrong. All it takes is three of you on this board to place it on the ballot. No petitions then are required. That's it.
That's not to my research. I'd have, I need to do some more.
Okay, well, that's what I'm telling you. Three of you can decide, and then the other alternative is sixty-eight hundred petitions, and then we can go over your head and ask the Super Bowl election to place it on the ballot. The process is, you decide that that's what you're gonna do, and then you people appoint a charter committee to draw up the charter. It's that simple. There's 20 other charters out there to look at, to pick out the good and bad parts, and decide what's best for Putnam County.
Mr. Haven, I've read the Columbia County Charter and the Clay County Charter. It is intriguing to me. It's got merit, but again, as we talked before, this is a brand-new step for Putnam County, and it could be a positive one, it could be a negative one. But we need to move the county forward here at this point, and I think every commissioner, I can't speak for them, but I'll speak for me, that I would love to do anything we can to move this county forward. And if the charter government's gonna work, then charter government gives more power to the people. I'd be for that. I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Well, like Carl said, it seems that the more affluent counties around us are charter counties. Isn't that what we want for Putnam County?
Well, I think, I think what we need to vote on, I mean, before we go down that road, we need to have a plan of action. You know, just to say we're gonna put it out to the voters without a plan might not make very good sense whatsoever. So I think we need to go, we need, we're not gonna put the cart before the horse, in my opinion. I think we need to get everything lined up. And I think everybody's, I don't know, I'm willing to help, so whatever we can do to make that happen.
Okay, for the record, Commissioner Harris has the floor. Thank you.
I agree with Carl Flag. There is a lot to this, and meeting with other commissioners in other counties, there are some good experiences and some that are bad. So I'm not sure how I feel about it. I think the process of petitions coming from the county is a good idea. Let people get involved and speak and let us know. I don't think you speak for the majority, so I'd kinda like to hear from our people, other people.
Commissioner Flag.
Mr. Chairman, I just want the record to reflect that I did not mention more affluent counties surrounding us. I mentioned the metro areas that were mentioned. Anyone that goes to the State of Florida website, especially the Florida Association of Counties, will be able to differentiate the counties that are charter versus those that are non-charter. I'm sitting here, by the grace of God and the will of the people, and I do feel that I am representing all constituents from one end of this county to the other end, to the very best of my ability. I'm not sure, again, what the motivation is, and I'm not for or against right now. I'm always an individual that's seeking additional information, seeking greater knowledge, so that we can make the most intelligent and most practical decisions that we can as a board. However, Putnam County, unique, just like the other 66 counties of the state of Florida, one size does not fit all. One prescription that heals one person will kill another person. And so I can appreciate the uniqueness of what we have. We do have issues from yesteryear that is catching up with us, that we're having to deal with each and every day, but it's not the will of this commissioner to judge yesterday's actions, because someone is going to succeed me and judge what we're doing now. But we do take what we have and make the very best of it. So as it relates to that, I would defer to our legal department any day for the proper research to be done, and then for us to ingest and digest that information that they, that they research there. It's not about reinventing the wheel. It is about making this county better. All five of us that are elected do respect what we call the sunshine law, and so we don't talk outside as it relates to county business or government business outside of these meeting halls. But the philosophy, the idea of how do we get there is going to be uniquely different, but that's why we come together in a setting such as this, so that we can present our individual views with the hope of reaching consensus, so we can move us forward. There's not a single person up here that wants Putnam County to move backwards, but when you inherit some certain things, you gotta take what you got, maximize it, and make the necessary adjustments in it so that we can be better, and that's what we want. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Elizabeth Bacon Smith.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Elizabeth Bacon Smith, 203 Morrison Road, Interlaken. Obviously, I needed to write this, make sure I said everything I wanted to say. Congratulations to Larry Harvey for your appointment by Governor Scott to the Regional Planning Council, which I saw
Good for him.
...in the paper coming in.
Not while you're driving, I hope.
I, well, I glanced. It was right there. I had a feeling I was opening myself up there. We need advocates like you. The Placa Daily News giving you a thorn for canceling the protests regarding Walmart's closure in Interlaken when the need and purpose no longer existed, suggesting that you missed a golden opportunity to rally the community, as though you don't already do everything you can to build consensus. This was grasping for a thorn, to the extent that my feeling is that had you proceeded, whether you would have been given a thorn for being a rebel and holding a gratuitous protest, just to bring attention to yourself. So I think that we can trust your judgment in why you canceled that protest. As I said earlier, we need leaders, advocates, and coordinators like you, and congratulations again for your appointment by the governor, where your skills and motivation will be appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Barbara Lee. Barbara with us. There we go.
Good morning.
Good morning. You wouldn't miss Lee pull that mic real close.
I'm here primarily on behalf of my ancestors.
I would truly like you to reconsider taking down the Confederate monument. I belong to the Order of Confederate Rose, whose primary article is heritage, not hate. And we try to perpetuate that by honoring our ancestors, and I hope you will reconsider your thoughts on taking down the monument.
Ms. Lee, yes, if I could, and then Carl.
Sir?
I know of no proposal to remove monuments in the county.
Okay.
Commissioner Flag had.
I know this figure is running all through the United States, and it's just, they're trying to make it like the Holocaust, like it never happened, and it did. And our ancestors fought for what they believed in, and I don't think they should be criticized. I think they should be allowed to be honored by their ancestors. And wherever the people decide that the monuments are offensive, when did they start being offensive? Two weeks ago? A hundred years ago? I think it's just a bandwagon people are trying to jump on, and I hope all the people that are concerned on taking the monuments down will reconsider.
Okay, Commissioner Flag has a comment.
Well, I have a question. This is at least the third presentation concerning that, and I have not heard of any movement in Putnam County, and there's no one outside of our county that can make it disappear overnight. And I have not been made aware, no one has ever approached me about any monuments that need to be moved or taken down, and so I'm not sure whether someone here has information that we don't have that will help us to understand. Because at the end of the day, if individuals are saying, please change your mind, that makes me think that someone already has a mindset for something to happen that I'm not aware of even being proposed, and I certainly would not want anyone to think that we're copycats in this community, that all we're doing is waiting on another community to do something, and then we're gonna jump in line and just do it. That's not quite how we roll.
Well, I belong to several Confederate organizations, and it's come down through the state, the state offices, that there are, this is one of the counties that is considering taking down the monuments.
Okay, will you take back to whomever you got it from, that if there was any consideration of that in this county, that these five would know, and this entire community would know? And so maybe the state is getting a P. County mixed up with another P. County, but this Putnam County hasn't had anything of that nature.
Well, thank you so much.
Been done before. We have a very unique history when it comes to that era and time. Palac, I encourage everyone to look into it, and it's really worth reading. Very unique. If anything, we should capitalize on it. Okay, anybody else for public comment? Morning, Mr. Spells.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
John Spells, 106 Sitcher Lane. Mr. Flag, I heard you make a, made a comment about you was considering as far as everybody, and I'm still having problems on Lewisboro Road with that retention pond between the street and the sidewalk that everybody seemed to neglect to look at.
You having problems with the retention?
That water in between the street and the sidewalk, the mud holes that's actually right up there in front of the residence homes, right in East Palaca, that I keep coming to the meeting, speaking of, and yet, you know, it's still falling on deaf ears.
Okay, nothing that you have said to us has fallen on deaf ears. It may not have been rectified to the level of your satisfaction, but everything that you have brought to Public Works, and that's kind of been the main avenue that you've been, you know, concerned with, and I, among these commissioners, appreciate when you bring things to our attention. Sometime, we disagree with how you bring it, but that's beside the point. When you bring something, we do drill down and pay very close attention to it, and Public Works is accountable for these things, and I'm sure, again, that at the transportation meeting this afternoon, that we will get some more information on it. What we have asked all of our citizens to do, especially when it comes down to Public Works issues, we've asked our citizens to make sure that they make the proper notice to that department, and then if it's not being done, and you've got documentation, I called the Public Works Department and reported this on such and such and such date, I was told that it would be handled by this particular date, it was not handled, give them an opportunity to say what happened, if anything happened, something, something that didn't happen, and then bring it to our attention that they're not being responsive. But just to bring it in this legislative meeting is not necessarily protocol, and that's all we've asked for over the time. And so right now, the Lewisboro Project, it's on the agenda for this afternoon as well, and we're talking about the trail, they're talking about the drainage, we're talking about crisscrossing Lewisboro over to Putnam County Boulevard, and all of those things where it relates to poor drainage in that area where the railroad was coming through, that's a work in progress, and we have made some progress.
When I come to the meeting, you want me to come in here and sugarcoat it? I shouldn't have to, I shouldn't have to even come in here and mention it.
this on such and such and such date. I was told that it would be handled by this particular date. It was not handled. Give them an opportunity to say what happened, if anything happened, something that didn't happen, and then bring it to our attention that they're not being responsive. But, just to bring it in this legislative meeting is not necessarily protocol. And, that's all we've asked for over the time. And, so, right now, the Lewis Brower project, it's on the agenda for this afternoon as well. And, we're talking about the trail. They're talking about the drainage. We're talking about crisscrossing Lewis Brower over to Putnam County Boulevard. And, all of those things where it relates to poor drainage in that area where the railroad was coming through, that's a work in progress. And, we have made some progress.
When I come to the meeting, you want me to come in here and sugarcoat it. I shouldn't have to, I shouldn't have to even come in here and mention it, because it is a safety hazard. When I drove through there, there's a pothole right at the edge of the asphalt between the sidewalk, I know it's at least six to eight inches deep, and it's full of water.
Yes, so you have brought pictures to us, and you have presented various areas throughout this county to our attention. And, we, through the Public Works Department, have been responsive to those. And, nobody has asked or ever expect John Spels to sugarcoat anything, because that's not your nature.
The other way you always try to rephrase my way of talking when I come in. At one point, you said I come in here with a ball peen hammer, but I just say it like it is. I'm not coming in here to try to sugarcoat it. I just said it just as simple as it is. It's just, that area has been neglected, and this been a procedure of that, their mud hole been there over six to eight months, and I done brought it up two or three times. But, you still saying I got the call to the road department. There's enough drivers drive around to actually see this stuff. I got a big pothole starting right at the entrance of my driveway, but I'll take care of that myself. But, my next question is, when is 309 gonna be finished? Do anybody have an idea?
All of that will be discussed, Mr. Chairman, at two o'clock.
I think we're about a week to ten days out, Mr. Jacobovitz.
Today, you're doing the final walkthrough today.
Today. Mr. Chairman.
It'll take y'all about as long as it gonna take them to do seventeen?
They're six months ahead of time, for the record, Mr. Spels. Commissioner Harris, that's right, sir. Ahead of schedule.
They've got that much left on their contract.
Mr. Spels, if I may, on our agenda, our consent agenda today, there is a construction permit agreement at Lewis Brower. I don't know if it's your exact spot, but if you'll just stick around, we'll pull that item and discuss it. We have been working on it, and it's on our agenda. Number E in the consent agenda.
Okay, anyone else on public comments this morning? All right, seeing none, we're gonna move to our consent agenda. Commissioners, anything wishing to pull this morning?
We pull item E, please, and let Mr. Jacobovitz address it.
Mr. Chairman, can we discuss E and I?
E and I, yes. And I.
Just for discussion, not for pulling purposes, but just for discussion, you know, for...
Okay, anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to briefly discuss G, just on the surface, please.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I assume that the consent agenda A, B, C, D, F, and H be approved, as presented?
Second.
Motion on second. Any further discussion on those items that are not pulled? Hearing none, all in favor of those being approved, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Carries. Okay, let's start with E.
Mr. Jacobovitz, would you approach? I'll just read item E. It says, "Public Works' FDOT Construction Permit Agreement for West Lewis Brower Road and Multi-Use Trail for Modifications to Drainage and Traffic Flow."
Good morning. Yes, that project is to put a through street. For Lewis Brower, it takes a ninety-degree turn, and then another ninety-degree turn to get to Putnam County Boulevard. And, what our intent is to make Lewis Brower go straight across, to make it safer and quicker for everyone traversing that area. And, while we're doing that, at the end where it takes its ninety, we've had lots of accidents throughout the years there at the corner, people trying to take that too fast. And, they've hit the guardrail numerous times, causing injury to themselves as they do that. And, when we eliminate that ninety-degree turn for the vehicle traveling, we also put a cul-de-sac there, so that bicyclists can come park at that cul-de-sac with a few parking spaces, and then enjoy the amenity, the trail.
Okay, and...
And, we've been working with the DOT for months on this. We would just do it ourself, but the trail belongs to the DOT, and they wanted to make sure that we cross the trail in a proper manner.
So, this takes care of drainage. Does that take care of the area specifically that Mr. Spels is asking about?
I don't know. I don't know where he's talking about.
I know where he's talking about. It's further down, near the driveway of your Public Works yard.
We'll have to take a look at it.
Why don't Mr. Jacobovitz get with him again, and between now and before we come back at two o'clock, we can drill down on that. I walked this area, West Lewis Brower, all the way to East River Road, across Putnam County Boulevard with Mr. Jacobovitz. He met with the fire department in the area to make sure that this plan was the best plan for the residents, all of those who are coming from Putnam County Boulevard, coming from East River Road, and other parts of the greater East Palacka area that needs to get to the highway. That is the most efficient and best solution for that. And, the reason for the delay is because of the need for the construction permit. This commission approved this months ago, and just going through the process to make sure that the construction permit agreement was formulated by FDOT is why it's coming back now. But, the project itself was already approved by this commission. So, I move that the construction permit agreement, Mr. Chairman, be approved with the modifications to drainage and traffic.
Motion on four.
Second.
Second discussion, Mr. Harvey.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Spels, I walked the area after the other last meeting too, and looked at all the drainage problem. Mr. Jacobovitz, I have one question for you. Twenty-foot road across there, is that gonna be wide enough for, because at our workshop, we talked about fire trucks and people like that. Is that gonna be, because yesterday we saw twenty-two foot, and that really wasn't a very wide road, in my opinion.
I'll have to take a look at the plans, because I was under the impression it's also twenty-two feet. But, we did meet with the fire department and discussed every vehicle that they would use. And, we've increased the radius on each side, so that the fire trucks can actually traverse the whole median there on Putnam County Boulevard, get onto Putnam County Boulevard in a quicker manner than they do right now, going down to the end and going off.
Okay, good. Thank you, sir. That's the only question I have.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Spels, sir.
Mr. Jacobovitz, I spoke with Mr. Corn yesterday, I guess it was, and he's the man who signed off to allow us to close that corner there with their access. He expressed an interest at some point in time that they may want to put a culvert there for some ingress-egress with farm equipment. Is that gonna be a problem?
No, and we've discussed it with him.
Okay.
He wants access off of the corner, and we said we'd allow that, at whatever time in the future they decide to do that.
Just for the record, thank you.
It'll be noted in the future plans?
Yes, we've already documented that officially, that we know that he, at some point in the future, may want to access.
Okay, because that was very generous of him to do so.
Spels trying to talk.
What's that?
Mr. Spels wanna come back and say something?
Oh, that's fine. Didn't see you behind there. I heard you, though.
First of all, to me, it don't make sense to take a road from the taxpayers and create another road. Now, if y'all start all that traffic down Lewis Brower Road, what about the kids that live in that neighborhood? I got that thirty-foot trailer out there on that truck. I can come right off of Putnam Boulevard and make that turn, actually to go across the old rails and trails without hitting anything. You don't eliminate a road because certain people running into the railing and all of that, that'll solve a problem. But, my biggest thing is, now, for what he's also saying, you're actually gonna design it where the farmer can use it, but you're taking it from the taxpayers that's easily coming up East River Road, make that swerve, that curve, and go. You eventually have semis, shake your head all you want, Walt. You eventually have semis, log trucks, and everything, starting all that traffic right there through Lewis Brower. But, you got a lot of people with kids that live on Lewis Brower, in which you gonna create a lot of traffic of these trucks coming to get cabbage and bringing potatoes, because they can easily cut right into there and make those swings.
If they're trying to get to L and M produce, wouldn't they wanna come down Cracker Swamp? Wouldn't that be a more direct shot?
They'll come any kind of way going by the GPS, because it was one turned over in the ditch the other day. You know, you're just actually creating more stress on that road on Lewis Brower, rather than leaving it really like it is. And, even when you bring the road through there, you got kids, is they gonna have a separate sidewalk, or they got to walk across the road to get to the rails and trails?
There's no other sidewalks.
Mr. Chairman.
Well, that's what I'm saying. You done put the kids now traveling across that road to get the rails and trail with all the flow of traffic at the same time.
Commissioner Flag.
Mr. Chairman, there is a benefit, and the citizens who live in that immediate area has applauded this project, because it's actually opening up the individuals, for an example, that would be coming off of State Road 207 on West Lewis Brower, heading, I mean, off, going westbound, coming off of 207. Instead of them having to go and do that zigzag, they're coming straight over to the road that they really wanna get to, and that is Putnam County Boulevard. We're not adding traffic. We're not deleting traffic. We're making an area, we're enhancing an area there. And, so, I'm asking, Mr. Spels, just give it an opportunity to work. I think you may have a little bit of misconception as to what is happening with the farm part. It's just an ingress-egress option there. That's not the project. The project is to make sure that Lewis Brower tees off into Putnam County Boulevard. That is the main thrust of this particular project there. And, I think that once you see it, and we've got some schematics here that we can make sure that you get a copy of, or to see it, so that you can be precise on your understanding of what's happening. I think you're gonna really appreciate that option better than the current option.
Not really. It's just a waste of money, to me.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I think that's good. Commissioners, okay, item read. Let's go to G next.
You said a motion on the table. What didn't you?
That's what, we did. We have a motion and a second. Is there no further discussion? All in favor of passing? Let's take them all together.
We've done the rest. We've done the ones outside the three-day discussion.
All right, so we have to take them individually. You offered a motion on that one.
Yes, sir.
And Walt in a second. So, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, it carries. Thank you. Now, let's go to G.
Mr. Chairman, the reason I wanted to talk about this, this is very exciting for Putnam County, $750,000 CBG grant, CDBG grant. Last Tuesday evening, after our workshop, this room was halfway full of people looking for helping their houses. Right now, we did find out last week that we had some issues with the applications. We got new applications here yesterday, and we're just gonna look at the timeline. Tabitha and I spoke about that this morning, but this is gonna be a real winner for Putnam County. And, I just wanted to advise the board of how big that meeting was in attendance last week. So, I move approval of item G to do this, sir.
Second. Motion on second. Any further discussion on item G?
Question.
Okay, call a question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. It carries. Thank you. Item I.
Mr. Chairman, this was not designed to pull. It was just a memo that was submitted to us, just to kind of further clarify some things that we know about the process and the procedure when we're dealing with state contracts for an area of need. And, so, the additional supporting document for this purchase, to me, clarifies, you know, any questions that I think need to be drilled down on, as it relates to letting the citizens know that we're always seeking the very best price we can. But, we also promote Putnam County every opportunity that we have. And, we don't promote Putnam County to cost us more. But, when it's an even opportunity there, we seek to shop local. And, so, I wanna commend the administrative staff for drilling down on this and allowing a process to be followed, and also, the local vendor to step up to make sure that we're in full compliance. Because, on an item like this, once you purchase it, it has to be serviced. And, it's not like you're gonna drive fifty miles or a hundred miles to get something serviced. And, so, there are not, there are no add-ons, and I just think that it's a good deal, and I just think that...
It matched the price. Good point. Another concern was this truck was being bought to service the landfill. In other words, ride around the landfill. That is not the case. This is a very unique truck that was not offered under the bid section or selections that we were offered, and we had to go outside to find it. But, this truck is responsible for going around the county with a very large crew and a trailer and picking up litter from folks that might dump, illegally dump anywhere. They're very busy. They do a great job, and they put a lot of miles on a vehicle. So, that's the intent of its service.
So, move.
My only question in the whole deal was that we didn't have anything already in fleet that might could be used for that, rather than purchasing one at this time. If we don't, we don't, but I just wanted to be sure of that.
James goes through a truck. He work, he's out every day, picking up mattresses and tires and all the stuff we don't wanna see.
This is when he takes the inmate crew with him?
That's exactly right.
So, move.
All right, we got a motion on floor.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment I'd like to make. I was unaware that this was not gonna be, I thought this was gonna be a director's truck, so I do apologize for that. I'm glad we're using a local vendor, and I think that's very important. The only problem, well, one of the problems I have, I did go on the sheriff's website and saw where Beck's is the ability to sell these, but not this particular vehicle. So, but I don't like us trying to, in our paper right here, it says, "Does not specifically apply to this situation." I'd rather change our ordinance before we bought the truck. I think we could do that. I think the deal would still be there, and it would only postpone it maybe a few weeks. But, until we could possibly look at changing our ordinance to allow this to happen.
Commissioner Harvey, let me ask you, if the dealer matched the best price we would get through the state bidding contract, what's the difference?
Well, the difference is, the attorney says this does not specifically apply to this situation. And, in speaking yesterday, him and our deputy administrator are looking at ways to correct the purchasing ordinance, so we can not have to worry about that. Am I correct, Mr. Attorney? Yeah, we're looking at, the particular section that you're referring to is the local preference section. And, that, according to the way that the ordinance is written right now, is it applies in a bidding situation where we're, you know, putting something out for bid. In this situation, we hadn't put this out to bid. Another organization had done so, but they're not part of that contract. So, we are looking at making some changes to the purchasing ordinance. It's been around a while, and it needs some refreshing. And, this is one of the areas that we're gonna be looking, as well as a number of other areas in that ordinance to bring it up to time. So, that is correct. That's why we couldn't just use a local preference in this situation. It's just, the way it's written right now, it couldn't apply. So, that's why we have to go through the formality of basically waiving the bidding requirements at this point, even though it's already been done by another organization, if that makes sense.
Mr. Castleberry, and then Mr. Flag.
Your ordinance as currently written allows you to do exactly what is proposed to do, for you to do today by this agenda item.
Mr. Flag.
Yeah, I think that where we're saying that the local preference ordinance does not apply, we're simply saying that we have the authority to do what's being done. And, so, we're not in any way, shape, or form of fashion violating an ordinance. We're just saying that that particular ordinance does not apply to what we're doing. This is when you're making a purchase, there, we have in the code currently the opportunity to waive anything that needs to be waived coming to this section here. I guess what I'm really drilling down on is that purchasing from a local vendor who's willing to match the price and the terms, to me, is not violating the local preference. It's giving you that option to waive that, something that doesn't apply.
Okay, any more comments, questions?
You've got a motion.
Here, now we have a motion on floor.
Second.
Got a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of this purchase, or the chair that authorized this purchase. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign.
Aye.
You're going against it?
I am, yes.
Really? Okay. All right, Mr. Bernstein, you're next on the schedule.
Good morning, sir. Well, he hooks up. I'm Bob Bernstein, 142 Elton Road, East Palacka. I'm fortunate enough to live on the river and wanted to talk about the river today. And, I'm, my degree's in marine science, and I've spent about forty years of my career working on the ecology of estuaries. So, I hope this is taken seriously. My, I'm here as a, really as a citizen scientist today. I don't have any vested interest in not being paid by anybody. And, some of you have seen some of this before, what I'm gonna present today. It's updated. Some, my goals are really to provide us all with sort of the, that we understand the same grounding in sea level rise science and what is happening. And then, to ask some direct... in sea level rise science and what is happening. And then to ask some directions on how to proceed with addressing sea level rise. How do we respond to it? And, but first, I want to tell sort of the story of sea level rise. And to do that, I'm gonna address a few things. The first three bullets coming up are science aspects. The second three bullets are really the management, the kinds of approach we take. And then finally, what to do. So, when we talk about sea level rise, we're not, we're not talking about this. And I'll show this picture of the mid-Atlantic area, Chesapeake Bay, just to illustrate that. When we talk about sea level rise, we usually think of the coast. It's not just the coast. Major cities like Baltimore and Washington DC here are tidal, and therefore they are influenced by the ocean and therefore subject to sea level rise. So, the first point I would like to make is that at Palatka here, we are, the river is basically at sea level. That's right. It's driven by the ocean water level. It's really not driven by rainfall. Rainfall might contribute less than 10% to the variability of the river. But the clue is that it's tidal, so that, and I live on the river, twice a day, the water's sloshed back and forth, and twice a day, it goes up and down a foot or so. So, that tells us, yeah, it's the ocean that's driving water level. Now, I have a little red star to stop. Is that a problem to anybody, or do you have some questions about that? Or do you not believe that, and, or why? I put a couple of red stars in here just to remind me to say, no problems there. No. So, we're, and a lot of you know the river. Now, besides just average water level, we have this, this is a plot of 30 years of monthly averages. So, you take the average water level for each month, and you plot it, and then the, that's the red line, and then the dash lines are high, low tide and high tide. So, there's this, on the top of the averages, there's this bump in the fall. We saw it pretty dramatically this fall, from October to December. The bump can shift a bit, but typically, this line, the, the low tide in October, which would be the right side of this dashed red line, is higher than the high tide in July, and that's typical. So, there's, there's no area that's intertidal, so that when we talk about changes, and then on top of that, then in this fall bump, we get tidal ranges, and then storms on top of that can really add to it. So, it's not that, the average doesn't make a difference if on high tides, somebody's place floods. And I had showed this slide before. This is the East Palatka boat ramp. You can see the dock at the end where the boat is. This is two years ago. This is a couple months ago, and you can't see the dock. In fact, this guy's up to his axles, and he's not even at the boat ramp. And just to illustrate, this was in our local paper, a woman outside her home, home off Dunn's Creek. And this is inside her home, standing in ankle-deep water, and that happened on several high tides for weeks at a time. Every high tide, her place got flooded. So, it is a real concern, and it's a concern now, actually. Now, I wanna go, this is the, sort of the story of sea level rise. This goes back a couple thousand years. For almost 2,000 years, sea level was pretty constant. It didn't change much. And we, I guess we, everybody assumed it's not gonna change. So, people built lots of buildings close to tidal waters and the coast. And then, the red part of the line, and around the industrial revolutions, sea level started to rise. And we'll take a look at that. And then, how much it's gonna rise is a big problem. It's a question of warming. It's a question of melting glaciers. This is, no projections. This is just like taking a stick off your dock and measuring the water level. This is at Mayport, the mouth of the St. John's River. And I think you see a trend there without any data analysis. It's rising, and it has been rising. This is over, I think, this is 84 years. But what's gonna happen after this? That's the big question. So, I'm gonna show a few data slides here. This is a plot over a much longer term. This is worldwide sea level rise. So, it's a yearly average. Each year is a blue dot. And there are some years where it goes down, but you can see that the trend is certainly up. And the red are satellite measurements, which are more accurate, and they can take a lot more measurements, particularly measurements over the ocean itself, which, they're not many now. There are buoys, and there are ships that take readings. And that trend, the recent trend, seems to be a steeper line than the previous 100 years. And the Corps of Engineers, this is a plot that they use. I mean, if you projected from Key West, it would be that dark blue line, but we're not likely to see the same rate of sea level rise. The Corps of Engineers, who I consider a, sort of a stodgy group, they're pretty slow to move. They have adopted this, so that any projects that are in waters, coastal waters, or water subject to tide, they have to consider projected sea level rise. For the Corps, that's pretty good. And then, my last data slide, and it's a bit intensive. These are, the initials there mean various models that predict sea level rise. This is out to the end of the century. And the end of the century may sound way out there, but a kid, a young kid today is likely to see the end of the century. And if we look at the, most of the projections, they average out around three or four feet. If we think of a shorter term, let's say a 30-year mortgage, the rise might be over a foot. That's, that's a big deal for somebody who's building a house in an area that might flood in the future. And just to, I won't go into the weeds very, very far here. I'll take one example. This model VR-09 is Vermeer and Romstorf, and published in 2009. It's the proceedings of the National Academy of Sciences. It's big, big science. It's not Mickey Mouse science. A 2010 update, say from 1990 to 2100, sea level rise might be from two and a half feet to six and a quarter feet. That's a big deal in the state of flat Florida. And they say in the 09 publication that this is with a high degree of certainty. So, some things are happening, like this is what Miami might look like with an additional three feet of water, to take a local example. And this was presented to the city. The areas, I have a pointer. The areas here that are crosshatched north of the city are low-density residential. If you look at Google Earth, it's all wetlands. And if we, if you look across the river in this abeyment, there are parcels, a lot of parcels back here in the county, but that's all wetlands, too. Would you really allow something to happen there? So, where I would like to go, the implications are that, yeah, low-lying areas are gonna flood a lot more in duration, frequency, and intensity. Septic tanks, septic tanks may stop working because there's no longer any downhill for the flow. Wetlands may be flooded to the extent that they actually disappear. If you submerge cypress trees, particularly if we have any saltwater with that, they will disappear. And then their function of cleansing water is sort of acting as kidneys. We lose that, and there may be more nutrient input to the river. And shorelines are gonna move up slopes. So, as the water goes up, maybe if it goes up one foot, if the slope is 1 to 10, which is pretty steep, actually, it would move up the, up the slope 10, 10 feet. In the really flat areas, that may be hundreds of feet. So, the, what to do? Development is gonna have to retreat from shoreline, move up slope. The picture of the woman standing in ankle-deep water in her home, in a couple decades, she's gonna be standing in knee-deep water in her home. That's not sustainable. So, you would want to avoid that by recognizing that sea level is increasing and will increase faster in the future. But where do we go from here? If there was some input in how I might work with the county, I mean, I'd be glad to just provide the science part. I know that planning is difficult. So, whoops. You know, maybe it's a resolution to that, do you recognize hazards represented by projected sea level rise and future actions to mitigate those? Comp plan revisions are coming up. I would encourage you to incorporate projected sea level rise into that. And err on the high side, that most of, those model projections we saw, the actual measurements seem to be exceeding those. So, there's a lot of things not understood, but the actual sea level rise seems to be higher than the model. So, take the high end, and then you're probably closer. So, where do we go from here? Can I get any feedback? I mean, does this all make sense? And...
Dr. Bernstein, let's do this. Mike Brown, can you come up for a moment? Some of this is already affecting us, and that's why I'm calling Mr. Brown up. And this past year, when it comes to that 100-year floodplain and, you know, some of the new lines, I'm wondering how much of this is already driving some of our planning procedures. Mike?
Well, clearly, we've, we've, on the building side for permits, we take pretty seriously the, and utilizing the new FEMA data for floodplains. So, I mean, we get a lot of grief from that. I know the building side does.
Yes, we have.
Because we're forcing people to, a minimum to elevate above the new floodplains. And I believe FEMA has, did do some consideration of sea level rise when they developed those. We also have, and granted, some may think that they're not strong enough, we have since, I think, 2010 or 2011, we do have some policies in the comp plan related to trying to reduce greenhouse gases. And we also have policies against development in wetlands and with upland buffers back from wetlands to try to address that. A lot of the problems we see, like in Dunn's Creek, were decisions that were made a number of years ago. And, you know, we, we recognize them in the planning department. There may be opportunities, if the board believes so, to look at our policies, both in the comp plan and in the land development code, to try to enhance or improve some of those. But I can tell you from our daily practices, we are, we recognize the rising elevation of the St. John's River and how that is impacting especially our low-lying areas. I hope that answers your question.
Well, it does. And I encourage both what Dr. Bernstein is suggesting in our planning department, but I wanted to make the connection that it's already affecting us.
The use of that boat ramp in East Palatka?
Oh, it's, something has to be done in that. And I was hoping you would speak to some of the older civilizations in Venice and any of those, you know, were they once on dry land? And now, you know, it's a city of gondolas and operators. Well, they just keep building on the island, or what's the deal there?
I mean, Venice was built on a marsh. A lot of Roman buildings were built at sea level, basically.
And is that what happened to them?
Venice is sinking. I mean, they're thinking of putting up walls and flood gates that they can open and close when it, but that St. Mark's Square, the big tourist attraction, every year it floods. It's just, they put boardwalks elevated a couple feet, but, and all the buildings along the main canal, the Grand Canal, they're abandoning the first floors in those. But it was built on a marsh.
We moved, yeah, we moved west to Holland with the big wall, right? That's meant to do...
I mean, some people look at it as a grand opportunity. I mean, where do you move Miami? For a civil engineer, how do you move New York City?
Build a wall, huh?
Well, you can at Miami. It's porous limestone, so you could build a wall around it, and the...
That's true. No bedrock.
Sea water just seeps up through the ground. It's, there's, Miami already spent a couple hundred million dollars elevating roads, but it's gonna get...
Commissioner Harvey has a question for you.
Thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate it. Mr. Brown, where did you go? There you are. Okay. I wanna talk to you in just a second also, but, you know, St. Augustine is currently experiencing problems down there with their drainage and their roads. And the St. John's River, last year, a year ago, at the St. John's River Caucus meeting up in Tallahassee, not this past one, but the executive director basically spoke about the St. John's, and as it gets closer to Palatka, stagnant water is not, people think it's rushing out, but it's really not moving that fast. It's like a lake. And, and with rising seawaters, we're already trying to hold back the Atlantic Ocean up there anyway at the port. It's, it's gonna be difficult for, if that seawater's gonna come over top of that fresh water and pretty much swamp us out, if you will. So, it's a big concern for me. I've done the topographical looks all the way up, and it's disturbing to really what it would look like. Mike, one thing I wanna talk to you about, in my classes that I've been taking, in the last couple of classes, we talked about some of the FEMA issues. I've sold flood insurance for years and never really had to get that. It wasn't a big deal here in Putnam County, but in other areas, it is because of overdevelopment. And the topography of the land is changing based on development of what's going on, which used to be high, high property is no longer high because of certain things. So, you might wanna address that, just to the board and the rest of the citizens.
Well, I'm trying, I, I'm trying to, I apologize. I'm just not sure the direction you want me to go on response.
Well, you know, what we do today in today's world, and we're digging ponds, and we're draining lands, but it's affecting land next door that never had problems before. And building these retention ponds on properties don't seem to be the answer either. I mean, it's just not, doesn't seem to be working. We're changing, we're actually forcing people into flood zones that weren't there before, is my point I'm making.
Well, and, yeah, I mean...
Or they were there before. They just weren't in a high risk there. I'm...
Right. And, you know, the new lines at FEMA, you all know, that the new lines at FEMA came up with that we've adopted, they brought in a lot of new property that was, wasn't designated in the past. One of the other issues, and we try to address it, is when we're dealing with individual parcels and some of that elevation, if they bring in fill to elevate their, that changes the whole drainage area and pushes water elsewhere to their neighbors. We try to deal with that, and that's, that's a difficult thing, because we don't have policies as of today on how you raise, whether you raise on stilts or bring in the fill. So, it's up to the choice of, and it comes down to an economic decision by the landowner. But that's something we, in planning and building, are aware of, and we try to address the best we can. But, yeah, you're right from that standpoint.
A few years back, one of my neighbors, Bulkhead, kinda leaned to the side. My wife got tired of it looking like that, so I went over there with a shovel, thinking it was gonna be an all-day job to kinda straighten that up. It took me less than probably 45 minutes, because the fill was just sand in the backyard. And once I dug beside it, and I could stand there and push it back, it solved the whole problem. I mean, so, you're right. I mean, what we think we got is really not what we got anymore, and we have affected that land tremendously. And, and I tell you, my flood insurance, homeowner's insurance was $1,300 a year on my property. And that's high. When you take people that aren't used to spending, and now we gotta force them into a flood product, that's, that's high for people. That's too much money. So, I'm just, I don't know where we're going, but I'm just saying, I just wanted to bring that out to you. That's all.
Commissioner Flag?
Yes, sir. My question is beyond county policy as it relates to... My question is beyond county policy as it relates to planning, building, and zoning, relying upon FEMA standards, NOAA standards, Corps of Engineers standards, and St. John's River Water Management standards. What role do we play in this equation legislatively concerning? Because I would think that there are regional and state conferences that are addressing it, because certainly it's not a Putnam County limited issue. So, how are you dealing regionally and then statewide with, with this?
You're right. There have been some state initiatives and regional initiatives, and it's, it's a worldwide phenomenon. You're not gonna stop it, so you're gonna have to deal with it, probably dealing with it through the permitting process than the, really, the planning process is the comp plan, to recognize that it is going to happen.
I mean, I guess, are you making presentations to a regional audience or to a state audience so that the proper scientists and engineers can be to the table? Because at the end of the day, the legislators can make the policy, but it's gotta be based on all that has come together, and it certainly can't be a piecemeal project where Putnam County is out here solo doing some things, and then St. John's is doing something different and, you know, so how do you, how do you pull it together?
The northeast, and I used to think I'm a regional, not planning council, regional councils, have pretty strongly addressed this, this issue. So, I think through the, through the counties, that filters down. NOAA has taken a big role in making communities and the nation aware of some of these issues.
Commissioner Harris.
Um, I want to thank you for your presentation, and I, I like that you bring that forward. You would be proud at our last waterways meeting, which you missed. We talked about this, and we were resetting up what we were doing and putting the importance on things. John Sammons was sitting at the table with us, and I was talking about regulations that we have before people issued building permits and what to do. And he said, "We have a lot of those in place, that we have been looking out for that." And I know that in our comp plan, we've had several things about setbacks from the water, and we've had things in our building. Remember, we were talking about the floor level being a certain, in a certain position and certain height to protect it. So, I think that we're working on it. I think we're listening to what you have to say, and I appreciate you being willing to help with our planning director and anything, if they could call on you for advice, if it's something coming up and...
I can get in the weeds of science. That might be my role. You don't want to know about the issues, and you don't want to read science papers and...
No, and it would be so much simpler, someone that's already educating, say, "This'll how, this is how this would work."
That's right.
And, so, I think we appreciate that and that we, we have that. You do counsel with them now?
Excuse me?
Have you, has the planning department spoken with you?
No.
And have you all worked on things?
I guess should be my initiative to do that.
That you would like to do that?
Yes.
And I don't know that we need a resolution to do that, but I think general consensus is that we would appreciate that very much, would we not?
That's right.
Absolutely.
Sure would.
And they are aware and they are doing things, but it would be nice to have a consultant we could just call on, and, and especially one that volunteers for free.
Well, I, and I do thank you for taking the issue seriously. I, I think it's a, it's a big deal. And my, my input might be that, yes, you're taking the issue seriously. Are you really considering, and I don't know that you need to, but there's a worst-case scenario that is not really unrealistic. So, elevating a foot, maybe that's not enough. Those, FEMA seems to be behind the calendar all the time. They're, they're slow in getting new maps out, and it seems like, you know, aren't we having hundred-year storms a lot more frequently than every hundred years now?
Yeah. Again, there's an economic factor involved, especially when we imposing regulations upon, you know, citizens and businesses, and you've got to have something to base it all on. So, you know, whether it's related to getting, obtaining flood insurance or related to getting a permit per se, you know, what do you base it on? And, you know, the, the scientists have to all come together and reach a consensus, and, and then this thing has to be something that is, is accepted by these various entities that are the regulatory groups that's, that's dealing with this issue. So, thank you again, you know, for your presentation, and we do what we have to do.
And, and that is being done on the science, science side of things, yeah. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bernstein. Okay. Let's keep rolling on through here. Next, County Administrator Rick Leary. Take you to the appointments.
I don't have anything other than the appointments that are listed, which there are several pending, sir.
Okay. Commissioners, anything on the appointment?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to reappoint Gay Esperson, District Three Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee.
Good deal. Okay, we have, we'll take them all together. Any others? Hearing none? Entertaining motion on retaining Gay Esperson?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
I made the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, you did. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Okay, we'll go to item eight. Council Manning, your own, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Back in December of 2015, as you remember, a, a group, Floridians Against Fracking, made a presentation at the Board Workshop. Their presentation was requesting that this board adopt a resolution in support of a statewide ban on fracking. There was some further discussion during the workshop, and then at your last meeting, I provided some additional information on both the position of Floridians against fracking as well as a position that is being, has been taken by the Florida Association of Counties. You directed me to prepare and present to you today the two resolutions that you have before you, one of which is in support of a statewide ban against fracking. The other is a resolution which aligns with the Florida Association of Counties. Today, you're being asked to consider both of these resolutions. You, you could either adopt either one or reject both. However, they are mutually exclusive. If, if you are in support of a statewide ban on fracking, that, that statewide ban, as it's currently written, would preempt the county from, from having any regulations on fracking. That's why we have two different resolutions. The other resolution, which, which coincides with the Florida Association of Counties, is against a statewide preemption on county regulation. It also is, opposes an exemption to the Florida Public Records laws for the fracking companies to, to have to provide information on the chemicals that they're using. It also is in support of a, a Florida-specific study on fracking being done before the legislature takes any move on the issue. So, so that's what's before you today. Again, the options being support one or the other, or neither, but not both.
Okay. With that being said, we, we have a couple folks in the audience that want to speak to this subject. John, we will start with you, and then Karen Chadwick will follow.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name's John Davis, 2038, Winham and Howell Court from Jacksonville. Come down here for several things. First, I want to support the statewide ban. That's where I'm coming from. And I'm glad I'm following up with the, the, the presentation that just came forward, because there was a lot of misconceptions about gas. Everybody thinks gas is the cleanest energy. It, it is very clean to burn. However, when you take, consider, in order to burn it, you gotta get it. So, when you take consideration of the mining, which is fracking and all, actually, gas is just as dirty, or maybe even dirtier than coal, because of the methane leaks and so forth, when the mining and all. So, it's really not that clean of a fuel. I was at Nassau County last night. They were thinking about doing the same regulatory-type resolution and all, and we, we talked about it, and they changed their mind. They went with the fracking ban for a number, a number of reasons, and I just want to go over a few. First off, home rule, I want to just go over the home rule thing. Home rule's great. I believe in home rule. You should be able to tell what, you know, your county, what you want to do. But then again, sometimes it doesn't fit into certain situations. Just like sea level rise, you can't do any, home rule's not gonna stop that, the sea level. And the same thing is, if I was your neighbor right next to your county here, and I leased out my fifteen acres to a fracking company, and they came in and drilled down, fracked, and there was some type of blowout, whatever, your county's gonna be affected. So, you know, your neighbors, what your neighbors do is gonna affect you, and what you do here is gonna affect your neighbors. And especially when it comes to fracking with the Florida aquifer, your, your water supply, your poison of it. We, we need to protect the whole state. Couple other things. Basically, if you take a look at what happened in Flint, Michigan, the, the problems up there with the water supply, it's a never-ending thing. What, the, the bad choices they make up there that led to the problem is gonna keep going on. There's no solution in sight for that. The other thing is, you take a look at what's going on in California. The gas leak out there, the gas well, the, the storage well that, it's leaking out there, started in October, still leaking. There's no end in sight. They're trying to drill, trying to stop it. The thing is, what would happen to Florida if that would happen right here in Florida in the middle of snowbird season, tourist season here? Billions of dollars of your economy would be lost, not only your environmental, national disasters and all. What would happen here in Florida, would something like that happen? We don't need fracking in Florida. The one thing they're talking about up the legislature, basically, they're saying, "Well, if we don't regulate it," or something like that, nothing's stopping them from, from coming in here and doing it. That's not true. Basically, it was over two years ago that they started fracking at the Hogan Well in Cuyahoga County, and I got a copy of the, right here, the cease and desist order, which stopped them. Basically, that was two years ago. There's no fracking in Florida now. Why? Because they can't frac. So, the, the thing is saying they have to regulate it to prevent it is false, because nobody's fracking in Florida now. The thing is, if you regulate it, what you're doing is opening the door, and that's basically what the oil and gas companies want to do. They want you to start by regulating. That opens the door, that's gonna bring them in here. We don't want to open a door. We need a fracking ban. Florida's not like any other state, and it was talked about with the limestone soil and all so forth, with the fracking. Fracking's gonna devastate your water, your air, your economy. We don't need fracking in Florida, and I'm urging you to support the other twenty-six counties, the majority of Florida, in pushing for, for a ban in fracking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Next, Karen Chadwick.
Karen Chadwick, 179 West Strickland Road. Thank you for considering these resolutions, and I agree with, with John that if you want to just keep home rule, that does open the door, and if you're allowing regulation, that is opening the door to invite that industry in. And I would ask that you go with the statewide ban. If they're gonna overrule with these new bills that are going through, either way, and take away home rule or eliminate, go with the regulation, so we can't have a statewide ban, we're gonna lose either way. So, I would ask that you go with the statewide ban. And then, at the same time, contact the legislators that are proposing these bills to take away home rule. And has anybody done that? Called them up and said, "We don't want to lose home rule"? You have? Do they respond?
We have, I was up there last week and spoke to a few, but we have Florida Association of Counties that is really advocating on our behalf that this does not take place.
Right.
Yeah.
But they're going more with the, keeping the home rule, not, not the statewide ban.
Agreed. We're talking home rule right now.
Right. So, what's the, the feeling? I wish we could speak after you have your discussion about it. If you do, then we could maybe respond to something.
You can, if you'd like.
Okay. So, anyway, I would just, um...
If you want me to open the floor up right now for Commissioner Delaration, I'll do it.
Okay, that would be great, just to see, you know?
Conversation, what it is.
Because I would definitely think just going with a statewide ban would be...
Commissioner Harris, I'll start with you, District One. What's your feeling?
Um, I very much oppose fracking in Florida. I think our aquifer is too delicate, that Florida's just kind of floating, and we don't need to mess with it. Also, our drinking water is a very precious asset, and it's something we can't undo. If we allow this and it's destroyed, there's no way to go back and fix it. So, we have to make a stance now before it happens. I also, I like home rule, but I think that damage that's done to the aquifer doesn't stop at a county line. It doesn't recognize county lines. So, we could say we don't want fracking in Putnam County, but if the people around us do it, we're gonna receive the damage. I don't think we have any way to go except to stop it statewide. And on the resolutions, the second one supports the Florida Association of Counties, and it lists them, and all those things are good, but I don't think they're firm enough. I think we need, need to take a really firm stance. The first resolution that you have in the bold writing at the top, when it explains the resolution, "A resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Putnam County, Florida, requesting a ban on oil and gas extreme hydraulic fracturing, acid fracturing, acid matrix stimulation, and any form of well stimulation for oil and gas in Florida." Period. But within the body of the resolution, the second and third paragraphs talk about us supporting Florida Association of Counties and the things that they stand for, those top two paragraphs. I don't know if we need to go over that, because we want to stop it in Florida, period. And I'm thinking maybe if we started with the fourth paragraph, "Whereas Florida's water supply may be vulnerable to contamination from hydraulic rock fracturing and acid matrix stimulation activities designed to extract hydrocarbons." I, I don't want to confuse them with the first two paragraphs going back and supporting what the Florida Association of Counties wants to do. And on the last paragraph, on the very last bottom, it says, "Now therefore, be it resolved that members of the Board of County Commissioners of Putnam County, Florida, will send a letter to our state legislators and the governor of the state of Florida, calling for a ban, disposal of fracturing waste, wastewater, and flowback disposal, for them to introduce and/or support a legislated bill prohibiting all forms of oil and gas, unconventional well stimulation, and resource extraction, and its disposal for related materials and byproducts, byproducts," period. And leave off that last part of it, where it says, "Anywhere within Putnam County or in the waters and land adjacent to the county." I think that needs to be removed. This one should support the whole state of Florida. That's my opinion, that we just stop it at the very beginning and stop it for the whole state, so that we don't damage part of it and have the chance of our aquifer being destroyed.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Flack, you want to go next?
Yes, sir. I think that if we are going to support the statewide ban, that we do have to have the introductory paragraph, which is the first one, and then eliminate the second and third one and go to the fourth one there. And I think that's what Commissioner Harris may have meant there, just the two paragraphs that, right? That, that refer to the Florida Association of Counties, so that the signal is not mixed upon arrival there. We are always concerned about preemption... We are always concerned about preemption and all, but the magnitude of the situation is just as she has stated, and I will not rehearse and replay that. We, what our neighbors do in this particular case does affect us without regard to county land. So, I would concur that the second and third paragraph in the first draft that has been so eloquently put together by legal would make that resolution as strong, as well as eliminating the last phrase of the last sentence, anywhere within Putnam County, so that it's showing again that we're concerned, this time is on a statewide. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I concur. I'd like to talk about the, on page ninety-two, the first paragraph. I would like to insert a word there. "Whereas fresh clean water comes from the Florida Floridian aquifer and Putnam County desires to protect its clean drinking." And I'd like to add, "and surface water supply," by opposing fracturing for fossil fuel extraction in Florida. I want them to know how important our surface water here in Putnam County is to us, just as well as our drinking water. That's the only comment I have. I support this statewide fracking ban.
Commissioner Felscher?
Anything I say would be totally redundant, sir. For what's been said, I'm in agreeance with the- I don't have a really opinion so much as Larry's surface water, but definitely what Commissioner Flag and Commissioner Harris said.
Okay, thank you. I'll start off with asking Commissioner Harvey on the surface water. Are you talking directly to Rodman? Because I know of no place we're pulling surface water at this time.
Well, I'm talking not just, no, no. I'm talking about all of our natural resources, our lakes, our river. You know, I just, I don't want spill-off to run into places that would be a problem for us. And we have many, many hundreds of lakes here in this county, and I think all of our surface water needs to be protected.
Okay, that's clear, clear enough. I, on page ninety-two, I support an outright statewide ban. I think that the conditions of our lime rock under us are more like a sponge, that this is a very dangerous proposition in a state that heavily relies on tourism, especially in the coastal areas. And the inland areas are where our drinking supply primarily are, and the aquifer and this sort of thing. That we've built a wonderful tourism business throughout the state. We don't have to have a dirty industry, or one that would compromise our natural resources, as you said, Commissioner Harris. I don't think we should even entertain this. And I also want to go on record saying that I don't agree with the Florida Association of County even discussing it. I think we have twenty-four counties, you said, sir? How many counties have signed on?
I think we don't want the twenty-six counties.
That's outright ban. So, that means there are counties that are considering a conversation about this very seriously. So, and they're doing it through the Florida Association of County, which is primarily our- You need to come forward, if you would, please. Mr. Debus. Go ahead, start over if you would, so that's on the record.
John Debus, Jacksonville.
Yeah, well, that's okay.
Okay. Yeah, there's, as of last night, there was twenty-five. Nassau County agreed to do a ban. They were leaning towards the other, the Florida Association of Counties resolution. We were up there discussing, and they came to the same conclusion. The only way to protect theirself is a ban, because you can't control your neighbors. So, there's at least twenty-six that I know of. I think there's a couple more in process. I believe two or three of the counties are with the FAC guidelines, but the majority of them are right-out bans. And that averages, the last town I counted was like over fifty-five percent of the population is under those twenty-five counties. Now, it's probably a little bit higher than that. So, the majority of the people are looking for a ban.
Still, there are a lot of residents that are, I don't know if they understand what FAC actually does, but it's a lobbying group at the state, permanently, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, that work for the sixty-seven counties of Florida. So, the fact that that many of the counties are speaking through them and entertaining a conversation on this subject of possibly doing it is scary. So, with that being said, Mrs. Chadwick, you wanted to get in on this conversation? Or is it going?
There's over forty cities, too, that have done-
Yep, I didn't even mention the municipalities.
I'm just happy to hear that you all are supporting a statewide ban and not going with the regulation, you know, which will open the door, which home rule, supporting the home rule resolution would be-
Are you planning on going to Tallahassee?
Pardon me?
Are you going to Tallahassee on this?
Uh, maybe. Are you?
I'll go if you go.
Okay, we'll ride together.
I, I'm pretty close with FAC folks, and I can tell you, they're going to get an earful from me.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
This is just crazy. It really is, and it's, we don't need it.
I know some of the counties are, the county leaders, you know, want to expand this industry, because they've been drilling, but it's, and they'll use that, that logic is, "Well, we've been drilling and we haven't had problems, but this is a whole different type of technique that hasn't been used before." And like he was saying, it was used the one time, and it was shut down because they didn't have a permit to do that. So, I think we should keep it that way.
Okay. Thank you, Karen. Yes. Commissioner Harris and Commissioner Flag.
Okay, thanks. I wanted to address Larry's comment about the surface water. And Larry, I agree with you, we want to protect our surface water. But it gets kind of into a different area where there's a lot of controversy. A lot of counties are taking some of the surface water in their county for things, and it goes before the Water Management District. And sometimes they allow them to do that, and usually they have a trade-off with conservation, that they'll have water conservation in their area for so many gallons, for so many. So, I don't want this to get off course into something else that's controversial, because a lot of people feel very strongly that they don't want that touched. I think it'd be better to leave this just pure with clean drinking water, and just not mention the surface water in this particular resolution, so that we won't stir up something that we don't mean to. We're just trying to say, "We don't want fracking." And we want to preserve our drinking water from the aquifer.
And I think you're right. I think the next paragraph pretty much says our natural resources, and those are our lakes and our rivers.
Yes.
So, I agree with that. I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Then, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion if we-
Also, here from Commissioner Flag, and then I would entertain your motion.
I just wanted, before we got to that point, our legal counsel, there's been some recommendations for some, want to make sure that they are in those two paragraphs that we are suggesting be pulled, that there's not some good medicine left up in there that needs to stay in the equation. And if it's not, then certainly I will be prepared to second the motion that Commissioner Harris appears to be ready to make, but I want to make sure that it's nothing in those two paragraphs that need to be saved.
I don't think so. Those are really, you know, being whereas clauses. It's just indicating, indicating the intent behind what the board is doing in the resolution. And, you know, their inclusion is, I think, to lend support for the idea that Association of Counties is, you know, considering the issue. So, if what I'm hearing is right, it's, and of course, the motion will tell me if I'm right. I believe the motion would be to adopt the first resolution, the one which is in support of a statewide ban, with the exception that the second and third whereas clauses would be deleted in their entirety. And in the, in the "now therefore be it resolved" paragraph, there would be a period after the word "byproducts" in the second-to-last line. Everything beyond that, starting with "anywhere," would be deleted. I will also have two other corrections to make. At the top of page ninety-two, in the whereas clause, where it's, the second line, "it's," the apostrophe after the T, before the S, would go away. That's a grammatical correction I would want to make. And then, finally, in the "now therefore be it resolved" clause at the bottom, the third line down, calling for a ban, the words "on the" should be inserted before disposal of fracturing waste. So, if the motion maker is in agreement with all those changes, then that would be the motion that you would be voting on.
I am, and I would like to add the words "and any other grammatical corrections." Okay? I did see something, I can't find it now. So, I didn't think we needed to mention those specifically, but if it's a Scrivener's error, I would like that to be removed. Yes, so I, Mr. Castle?
I think we need to make the same change in the last "now therefore be it resolved" clause. Deleting the language "anywhere within the Putnam County" or "in the waters and land adjacent to Putnam County," don't we?
I didn't hear you, Mr. D. Yeah, that's why I said that the period will come after "byproducts," and everything after that would be deleted.
But that's in the first resolved clause. I'm talking about the second resolved clause that limits it to Putnam County also.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah. That's right, so both of those.
I second the motion.
Okay. Motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. All right, Clerk of Court, Mr. Tim Smith. Been awfully quiet today.
Well, that's good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have no items, but I did want to introduce Mr. Scott Lemme. He's our Assistant Finance Director for the Clerk's Office Finance Department. John Jones has had some health issues over the last few weeks, and I want to commend Scott for really stepping up and pulling the force there. And we're hoping that tomorrow that John gets the okay from his physicians to return back to work. So, it is looking up, and we certainly wish him well. But we have no items today, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay. We wish him a speedy recovery, and thank you for that report. Okay, with that being said, Commissioner comments. Anybody having any?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead. Commissioner Harris?
I guess we all received a letter from the Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences from the principal. And he mentions safety concerns about a school zone at Palm Avenue that it's not mentioned. And I just wanted, I don't know if that's something we do or the school board does. I don't know why he's getting the runaround from everyone, but would like to see us do something with that.
Who's that?
Captain Wells. The community safety team had both the school district, the city, and the county and all in a single meeting, and so I think that issue is being handled.
Castle?
Come on up, Captain Wells.
I was actually going to address it in the transportation meeting this afternoon, but that's all right.
Okay, well, let's just have a little update if we can, if that's all right with you. Commissioner Felscher?
Well, sure, I apologize. I don't know how much update that I can give you, because I don't know the final resolution from the last meeting, but I do know that we have had discussions on whose jurisdiction that is, what city road, but then we're dealing with some county right-of-way through there. And I know that county planning, county road department, city public works, and the school board have all sat down to work to get to that. We have done traffic studies, we've looked at the speed of cars through that area, and we have determined the amount of traffic would certainly, in our opinion, justify some traffic control in that area to help those students out at that location. But again, you may have more details than I do. I didn't hear the final results of the most recent meeting, other than I can say it is a collaborative effort between all the agencies to get some relief at that location.
That's pretty much what I understood from Mr. Dukovitz. There seems to be some, whose ball is it? And that hadn't quite been resolved yet.
I just wanted to make sure we got to the bottom of it. So, will we have a result by our two o'clock meeting today?
Don't know that we'll have a result, but we certainly can drill down into it some more.
I think the other issue is the relationship of the school district to charter schools in this county. And I think that the bottom line is, is the verdict is that they are our children, whether they in a charter school, or a public school, or a private school. They are our children, and safety has to be the number-one priority. And so, I think our administrator can certainly talk with public works, and the city manager can talk with their public works, and whomever the superintendent, and get that resolved. I mean, forget the red tape, forget all of the other jurisdictional situations, and let's not have a homicide, traffic homicide investigator out there trying to solve an issue where someone tried to cross the road, or because it's already retrofitted into a school. We all know that was a medical complex. And now they have recreation going on, it's right next to the credit union, the church, the chapel, all of those things are happening there in the new warehouse on Palm Avenue. So, it's booming, so to speak. And we're glad that the building is not a vacant building. We have our share of those in the community as well. So, I think that it's easy. It needs to, administration needs to just go ahead and take the bull by the horns and get it resolved. And forget about jurisdiction, somebody pay for the signs and put them up, you know, and let's make it happen.
I think, I think you're absolutely right about that. And, you know, we learned a lot about the jurisdictional issues and the time that it takes to do this. When we dealt with the Reading Academy out on St. John's Avenue, we dealt with some of the same issues there. And, you know, certainly, we are on our end, willing to enforce that, and are recommending any traffic control that we can do. Because one thing that we do see, one thing that studies tell us for sure, is that speeding or violation of traffic control laws inside school zones is extremely rare. The vast majority of travelers abide by the speed zones in school zones to a T. So, that seems to be the resolution to us, and we're willing on our part to attend any meeting, do anything we can to help that happen, because that is a four-lane road that runs through there, and it is heavily traveled, and we are dealing with the student's safety.
Yes, Commissioner Harvey.
Before I let you off the podium, since I've been here, I've been kind of out in our area in the west Putnam man. You realize how long that school zone is from basically twenty almost to, gosh, all the way up to the Mormon church, if you will. And this morning, I came through there, headed to the south, and the light was flashing on my side to slow us down to twenty miles an hour. But when, I kept wondering why these cars were flying through. But when I got to the other end, that light was not flashing. So, I think it's sending to me, I would like to see lights inside there or painted on the street, or we've got to do a better job in some of these areas. And I know it's not your jurisdiction, but if we could have a, really, a talk about it county-wide, I think it would be beneficial.
I think the first thing we need to do is determine if we've got a light issue, if one's working on one end, unless you just happened to time it when you came through.
Well, it might have took me a long time to get there before that light turned off.
Correct, I understand.
But-
Okay, so we just need to verify that that's-
But I wasn't about to let the guy behind me push me out of the way, because I was dedicated to going twenty miles an hour.
Right.
So, you know, I just, better be safe than sorry.
We'll take a look at that one, Tim.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, any, yes, Ms. Chadwick.
I just wanted to say something about the planning and sea level rise. And I would, in the revision of the comp plan, I'm not sure when that's supposed to happen, but I would just ask that you be careful about revising the comp plan for allowing more development in areas that are rural now, or annexing property to allow for development. There's a big problem in Elachua County around the Hawthorne area. That place, twelve-hundred acres was annexed, and they created these enclaves. And the people that are living there for a rural experience are now going to be surrounded by industry and development, and they're just devastated by it, the people that are already there. And I would hope that any big changes that were coming would be brought up, maybe in a workshop, or- a workshop, or just let the public know what's going on before anything is signed and sealed. And also, the Silver Spring spring shed is already, according to the district, St. John's River Water Management District, is already over-allocated by 30 million, about 30 million gallons a day. And so, there's more and more permitting going on. That's what the whole Central Florida Water Initiative is about, is that the aquifers are over-permitted. So, I don't know if Bob's still here. Some people do see it as an opportunity to move from the shore up to high ground, and we already have, you know, our lakes are still low out there in Interlock, and even with all this rain, our docks are still out of the water. There's too much pumping going on already, so if we build these big developments and we're counting on groundwater, it's going to exacerbate the problems. All the waterways are designated impaired already, so we've got runoff issues. And so, I'm not a big fan of development, obviously. I know it's on the books to be moving up in this area, and so, I hope you keep the public informed. I would ask for that. Thanks.
Thank you. Hey, anything else, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, yesterday, I attended the I-75 relief meeting over in Citrus County. We're not really on the radar, but it's in, we're kind of in that box that Melrose area is, so I attended that, to look at that. Next week, I'll be attending the FAC conference in Tallahassee. I'm sure some of the other Commissioners might be attendance. And last week, I went to Tallahassee and spoke at the St. John's River Caucus meeting on the Senate floor.
What was your title?
Title was "To Protect Our Waters."
I'm saying, what was your title?
My title was the Commissioner of Putnam County. And the, and, I hate to say, the Executive Director of Save Rodman.
Oh, I thought I heard you say something else when I saw it.
Oh, oh, yes. I did make a, I tried to make a funny, it didn't go over so well. But I do like their microphones that you pull out.
Okay. Anything else? Entertaining. Motion for adjournment.
So moved?
Done.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock.
Transportation and logic...